Yeah, I can hear it.
Yep, yep, I'm hearing it. I'm hearing it going down the feed.
I brought you a donut.
You were panicking about it outside, so I set up the speaker.
Yeah, I didn't expect this, but.
You know, if people want to sit back here, there's more room here, and it's not violating.
We actually can't put any more people inside, heard that.
Well, I know also. Tell me when to make zoom.
Yeah, we'll keep it down. Roll set. Is there a mic on us? I'm hearing us talking. It's probably just supposed to. If you want to start talking.
Hear that?
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, yeah, it's just in the. Is that the mayor? Is that the mayor?
Alrighty, it's before clock on the tenth of March twenty twenty-two. I call the order of the special council meeting to the Cardinal by the city city council. Can I get a roll call, please?
I'm council member Baron.
Here.
Council member for me. Council member size here. Mayor Pro Tem Richards.
Here.
And Mayor Potter.
Yes.
Everybody's here.
Alright, we have a forum we can commence for the night's business. So the public appearance items first, is there anybody in the public who should speak at this? On a night that's not on the night agenda, three minute limitation on that set on. And stating your name to the record, I appreciate it. If anybody was to speak tonight. On a night that's not on the night agenda. It's gonna be kind of difficult because just about everything is on the agenda. Alright, you know, when I close the public commentary, bring forward back to the night's order of business.
Yes, sir.
We are. Oh, I'm sorry.
I think Mr. Tarbox is going to speak on the item.
Yeah.
To be objective, Mr. Mayor.
And on the, and on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Our politics. Right, okay, again.
Yes. All hot lights.
No fanatics here. Alright, so we're convinced with the city council, we're choosing the strategic planning opportunity for the council to discuss strategic projects together with the public. Provide direction to staff regarding free prioritization of each project. On the list, the city council may give direction to staff during strategic planning process. However, any actions to implement such directs will be considered future state of company. Chip, the floor is yours.
But thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you all for coming. A couple of quick announcements. There is additional seating outside. I think we anticipated this. This is like four thousand percent more than we've had in a large pre-planning meeting. So thank you all for coming. We're very grateful for. I mean, insurance, but a couple of other announcements. We will have a closed session following the regular session today to talk about potential relegation to mayor, the city returning the ignore virtually, obviously. You have to wear your masks all in the room, so please do respectful vacuuming to your neighbor. And then one more thing, council, we do have some conflicts for the C I P meeting that is scheduled for next next Tuesday, so we're gonna have to find another date, so we can talk about that following this meeting as well. So the, the purpose of our agenda tonight is, is to look at the list of priorities that the council has been developing for some time. And we're gonna prioritize the priorities. And I will not let you leave this room until we, until we get a concrete list of of subjects and topics that we're gonna focus on for the next time period without calling the next nine to twelve months. You can change that, but that's, that's our recommendation, the next nine to twelve months. And we're gonna actually exit through the spreadsheet that you received. We've got twenty copies of it over here on the bar. People that have blue on it. So if anything you want to follow, it'll be, it'll be subjective, but that's what a council party is serving on everyone. And that we've dealt so far, and we're gonna be asking the council to do is prioritize.
Well, in the survey.
Take one of the most important ones we will be working on now. And we've got a methodology that I'll tell you about and execute within a minute. The first thing I want to do is ask Maxine, she prepared a couple of slides to talk about recruitment, where we are. How many positions that we were down because of the horse, the pandemic, and budget cuts that we have. And where we are and rebuilding our staff. Can I mention that there's seating outside, as we've seen, there's a limited capacity. The first down, let the people outside turn the windows, so they can see through when we, when we come to the public comment and to mayor. What does that's the people telling you to invite the front by left to your right? To share their comments. So my suggestion again, once we get into the cadence of the meet of the meeting after Maxine presents, is we're gonna quickly go through all of the priorities that you've already established. Briefly talk about them. I may go to Ashley or Mr. Muir or Robin, talk briefly about them, real briefly, real briefly, Mr. Muir. If need be. And then, and then council questions of staff. Prior to going to the public with the entire list or anything else they may suggest. And then we come back and we have the debate. So if that's okay with you, council, that'd be my, my proposal. And without seeing any, any east-west heads, if it's okay, we'll go to Ms. Gulo, who's gonna present us with just an update on, on the recruitment. We'll certainly take questions when I have them as well.
Alright, so. Good evening, mayor and council. I know during our last strategic meeting, there were a lot of questions regarding recruitment and staffing. You know, without staff, we can't do the projects that we're here tonight to talk about and priorities. So I just wanted to take a few minutes to share where we are from a recruitment standpoint since the last time we met. So this is given overview for the last four fiscal years of how many hires and separations the city has had. As you'll see in eighteen nineteen, we did have fifteen hires and already at the beginning of this fiscal year, we're already at eighteen. And I have several more, I call conditional offers and plenty of recruitment that I'm still working on. You can see the volume of recruitment that we are doing this fiscal year to attract and retain and keep our employees and add our employees, but we are definitely doing a lot of recruitment efforts. Some of the questions are about why do our recruits take so long? The city does follow the uniform guidelines on employee selection procedures, which means we have to have validated everything from our written tests, our panel interviews, these are considered exams for a public agency. So there's a lot of time and effort that goes into every recruitment and we need to follow these guidelines. So these processes do take a while. This is just a sample of the recruitment that our postings are usually up to four weeks. And again, we will pivot if we don't get enough applications. We have to be very flexible. We do then screen our applications. It can take about two weeks. We have exams that can consist of a written, a physical, a performance, a panel interview. There are several types of exam that we do. Then they have to go to the department selection interview. And then we call it, if we provide a conditional offer, there's several continues to be. An applicant has to go through, which could be single training, reference test, and then if it's more, there's even another list of things of employee have to go through. You'll see that two to twelve weeks because there are several factors that go into the background process. Our D O J, single print, sometimes we can get a two to three days, and we're seeing where some come back twelve weeks later. And there's nothing that we can do about it, and we can't start employees until I call that immediately have been passed. And then when the employee is cleared, the soon to be employee have to give notice to their employer, which can be anywhere from two to six weeks. So you'll see that recruitment can't take anywhere from twenty-four weeks. And that is with several staff members, and that is a very, I call, quick process for trying to get employees on board. These are just some of the statistics that July won since the beginning of this fiscal year. We've, we've completed twenty-two recruitments. We have a new recruitment video that we have integrated into all of our recruitment materials. As you'll see, we've had twenty-three thousand six hundred fifty-four hits on our dog announcements.
Some background conversation.
Although we're going on five hundred and ninety-eight applications. What that does for me is that our, because of our robust advertisement, people are seeing our dog announcements. So that's kind of some of the statistics I'm trying to show. Right now, we have recurrent postings, we have multiple conditional offers out, and as I indicated, we hired eighteen today as the number for you. Some of the challenges that we continue to have are that we have had multiple candidates decline our offers because either their current employer have provided them a promotional opportunity, more money, more flexibility to tell them you. A lot of the Florida and the swarms are very hard throughout California. Every public agency for the most part is hiring police officers. I've seen some cities are getting bonuses and that's not even helping. It's just, it is a very hard to feel condition right now. Again, several of our recruiters, we had to do multiple times where we, although we're doing very robust advertising, we are not getting a big adequate pool. And as you'll see that some of our employees have gone to other jurisdictions nearby because everybody is hiring right now. And then, you know, departments choosing whether or not to be consulted or contacted versus maybe not being hired. So these are just some of the continued challenges, but I wanted to provide an update that we have made a huge segue since our last meeting.
Joining a city council.
Alright, thank you. Appreciate it. Right, so then Brandon or Chip, which of you are gonna kick this off?
So Brandon's gonna work the, the spreadsheet, Mr. Mayor, and as I said, this is a, it's a dynamic spreadsheet, so as you make changes at the end of your discussion, of course, we're not, we're not appropriating any funds tonight or anything, but as you make changes in the priorities, you'll see, you'll see that the table change. We'll print them and we'll publish it, obviously, on that. The one thing I'm gonna reinforce that Ms. Gulo said is that we're doing a good job at trying to recruit new, new employees and certainly retain our existing employees, but recruit new employees, but without filling our ranks, it's, it's increasingly difficult to address priorities. So we're doing our best and we've made some, we're making some progress, even under duress, even under the, again, the horrors of, of the pandemic. But there's a lot of work to do, and that's what you see on this list. Let me show you an example of how dynamic this spreadsheet is. Priority number eight, and, and this is to update the zoning code and design, design guidelines, those are for presidential, commercial, and the guidelines for public credit way. You, last week, it seems like a while ago, but it was last week you approved the contract with Wintering Company. Wintering Company is the, I think he's playing from the help desk with our design traditions project about twenty years ago. And you have rehired the firm to update those documents. We call it design traditions one point five. Not a total redo, it's an update. So the number on the spreadsheet, we did this on purpose, that's fifteen percent. And so in this case, as soon as Brandon gets back together with technology, he's gonna go ahead and, he's gonna go ahead and update.
What? Can you, I'm trying to.
Bear with us. This is our second meeting in public in, in yeah, twenty, twenty-five months. He's gonna update that spreadsheet to show you that we're, we're, we've completed more than fifteen percent of that project. One of the factors you may wish to consider when you're prioritizing these projects are the percentage complete. So I certainly wouldn't recommend that a project that is eighty-five or ninety percent complete, that you, that you're not continuing to prepare. So climate action is, is doing really well, the design traditions project, a lot of projects that we're making a lot of progress on. The additional recommendation that I'll make to you is that again, the priority number projects are projects that we're gonna do the remainder of this calendar year, the next nine months. So is it thirty? Probably not. Is it twenty? Probably not. So really trying to focus on what we can accomplish with the existing staff, with the knowledge that the E P I's staff has been sharing several months, and what is really attainable. Everything else falls to priority two lists. The priority two list probably is still a little bit.
That's our zoom, right?
We complete priority one project. And then you have also a priority three project. We wouldn't move on to a priority three project until all the priority two projects have moved up to priority ones and have been completed. Now, this is a dynamic spreadsheet. This is very dynamic. Yeah, so let me just say it again. No, so yeah, just give us a second. Please bear with us. The other project that's on your list, I think it's number eleven. Twelve. Okay, so Brandon, you're gonna update priority of project number eight, which is the residential and commercial design guidelines and design very robust public process. We told you last week, it will take more than nine months because we want to make sure the public is intimately involved in the process. In fact, right now, you're thinking about who you're gonna nominate to, 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 to join that, on, on that design traditions committee. Sending a little bit of feedback to the list at the regular meeting for, for all of you to take a look at. So what, what, what percentage do you think we're at as of today from the world? Rated fifteen percent, less than a hundred percent.
Yeah, I think, I think with the, you know, the approval of second amendment. I think with the approval of, of the contract, and you've actually started working since contract's been approved, I think we're probably close with the twenty-five. We've got the first quarter worked on already, so we can just go in and update that right here.
So twenty-five percent. So as, as we, as we go.
Go through the list, council, my suggestion.
And, and I'll, I'll briefly, I'll give a brief plot synopsis, certainly to the benefit of the public, but to remind you of what the, what the priority project is, and explanation. Again, if you have questions of me or the, the individual staff member, you'll see a column that says the responsible department. So again, Brandon or Max or Ashley, go ahead and, and direct your questions to them, please. We can do it as we go along, Mr. Mayor. We can wait till the end. Doesn't link to that to us. The other project that we've made incredible progress on, in fact, you just signed, I haven't signed it yet, but employees to sign the lease agreement, the pack rap theater for the forest theaters, a master lease. So that one is, is pretty much a ninety-five percent. We still have to spend the money that you appropriated, but that's, that's, that's almost at a hundred percent. So I think this project number is. I would say ninety percent, Brandon. That's project number twelve on there. So again, eventually, these will move on to the list and continue the project. So, so I guess, council, the first question is, what do you think about our little draft methodology? Is that an appropriate way to go through this?
Hopefully a little bit of comfort. I think it sounds good tonight.
Okay.
You guys.
Thank you. The, the first project, and, and these are not in priority order at this point in time.
That's correct.
This is just, this is just the list. The other thing that we did is across the top, we created we created a, a status for each month. And Mr. Baron asked about, you know, a target, and that, that's, that's good. What, you know, what is our target for completing some of these items? So we tried to put some, some verbiage in, in several months out about where we would be in each particular project. Kind of, we, we watched the time. So paid parking, Mr. Richards always talks to me about visitor management. Two days from now, there will be a line of cars from the, from Ocean Avenue to Highway one for people visiting our village and searching for parking. So one of the things that we're, you, you, you told us to put these on, put this on the list is looking at paid parking as a way of managing our visitor traffic. So that's the primary purpose there. Chief Euler can speak passionately about how much money we can make, which is a wonderful ancillary benefit. But the primary benefit is to manage visitor traffic to make it easier for our residents to get across ocean when they want to go home on the south side. The next project is to update our purchasing ordinance. Our purchasing ordinance is sorely outdated. You know, there's, there's projects on this list, council, that are not, they're not that attractive. They're just, but their, their type is in the things that we have to do. The purchasing ordinance was published last day, updated in the state of ladies. So it really is, it's important. We're getting clean on it now, which is wonderful, but the purchasing ordinances is how we, how we transact business. Accounts payable, accounts receivable, our bidding, our fee process. It's a very important thing for you to update again. Not the sexiest project on the list, but it's something that we eventually need to do. The next project is develop plan to ensure that the city's natural areas, as well as private property, are properly maintained and reduced this, of the Biden. This is happening all over California, obviously. We would feel very secure, we, we're working in British Trail Nature Preserve, we budget running every year for a fuel load reduction. We're working with Chief Campbell's, our, our fire chief, and Chief Euler. To get us that, and concert with the other partner agencies, the city of Monterey and Save the Super Pro. So that one is plugging away to some degree. I will come down. This is me on a grant. After that, like the city of Monterey, I think last night appropriated money for that project. E G then appropriated money. You already had appropriated money. So Monterey is compliment. So again, that's, that's obviously a high priority project because it is essential safety. A review opportunities for.
I'm sorry, just one, some people.
This is a project that you assigned in ad hoc committee, come from the Tyson, Mayor Pro Tem Richards. I worked with myself and Chief Mosley, Chief Euler. That one's made me some progress. Chief Euler, I mean, we're, we're in negotiations at this point in time with the city of Monterey. Would you say the percentage of lead is greater than twenty-five percent, sir?
Yeah, we should do that at thirty-five percent. We're making progress right here.
Well done. Thank you. So that's, that's an example of a project that we certainly wouldn't want to derail at this point in time. So I would strongly recommend that we maintain our momentum on that particular project. The next project is review and update the sign ordinance. As you'll see, it's at ninety-five percent. The next big hurdle, people think that going to the coastal commission isn't easy never. It's not ever. So thank you for that. Thank you.
Thanks, yes.
Whatever, whatever. Thank you. Yeah, so I mean, we're, we're, it's an L C P, I mean, it's part of our, part of our municipal code, so. It's an L C P, and that was pretty, pretty basic.
And Chip, this has made a good point, you know, I like the fact that we added a column for the. This is the first one on the list.
It's a good, that's a really good point. Yeah, so we added the column that says this is a record for response to order.
And that was feedback we had last time, you know, checking this account, they want to be able to see what are we required to do by the state or other regulations, what are we choosing?
Yeah, you'll often hear me, and I apologize for doing this, but I complain about, I'm on this stage and federal lenders.
Negations, we can't avoid them. But we have to, we have to be noble enough to address those needs and responsibilities when they, when they, when they come at us. Prepare climate action and adaptation plan. I'm happy to report Mr. Brand's gonna give a presentation on, on where, where those plan, where that plan is at our next meeting. But that one is, is, you know, we're very close to the finish line on that one, so we wouldn't want to derail that plan. This is also a prime example of a plan that will in the future help inform and educate your capital improvement plan. There will be project recommendations that spin out of that plan that we will eventually ask you to appropriate money for. Whether it's our seawall, a sand replenishment, it is a variety, a variety of, of, of capital projects that will spin out of that plan. Moving right along, develop a forest management plan and update the tree ordinance. Obviously, our urbanized forest is, is a very essential part of our character. So again, it's something that we, we, we certainly need to do and not ignore. We talked about the zoning code, accessory dwelling unit ordinance. So that is again, a regulatory responsibility, or we're obligated to follow the state's rules, which I don't think we want to do. The last time we talked about this in this forum, Mr. Baron had asked for a list of how many A D U's we've approved. I think it's thirty-nine or less than forty, about forty, and there's a map. So the other, well, they're all gone. The other document receiving your packet is a map that Mr. Court, our associate planner, put together. put together for your consideration. Again, this is something that we eventually have to do, whether it's a priority one at this point in time or a priority two will uh will leave to you, and um you can get input from from Mr. Swanson. Telecommunications, this is wireless telecommunications. Obviously, we had our listening session with the planning commission about a week ago, week and a half ago. Again, our our wireless ordinance is sorely out of date. It's not consistent with federal laws or rules. So again, you've begun that process. You've committed to a very public process. So um, uh, that's being worked by, again, Brandon's department and and Mr. Pyrex's department, the the city attorney and his team. Uh, filling vacant positions, this is one that you would think is a very typical responsibility of a city, but you added it on the list last time because we wanted to make sure we didn't take our eyes off the ball. Again, thank you, Max, for your presentation on that. Keep plugging away, keep doing the, keep doing the good work.
Percentage on that one?
Well, it's great, greater than zero and less than, what what percentage would you put? Fifty percent? Fifty percent. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, forest theater facilities manager. We talked about that at one minute ago. We're we're on the goal line on that one. That one's basically on the completed list. Pandemic recovery, reopening, reporting, et cetera. I think we're at a little bit better than fifty percent. We still are forced to wear these masks. Some jurisdictions are now eliminating the need to review um visitors uh vax records and booster records. And when again, a shout out to to Cert, thank you again, Cert, for for helping us with this. I think the planning commission last night uh proposed to stay remote.
They did. We put it on the agenda. It was an agendized item, and they decided to stay remote for for the time being until, you know, some new rule changes.
I think, Mr. Mayor, the Forest and Beach Commission is reviewing it tonight or next week. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
They talked about it today. I think that a special meeting at noon. I don't know what the outcome of that conversation was.
Again, just like you asked, um, the, we're asking our 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 wonderful volunteers, our board and commission members about whether they feel safe enough coming back in person or whether they'd like to stay remote. We, of course, are in a hybrid setting in this uh in this setting today, and we'll continue with that setting uh for the foreseeable future. But um, again, we've made great progress by getting back in in person a little, a little bit later than I than I'd hoped, but uh last week as well. Uh, the stormwater ordinance, again, there's this pesky little thing called the Clean Water Act. It's a federal law. We have to abide by it. Again, this is a regulatory requirement, something we have to address. Just don't have the capacity right now. We're going to hire a consultant to to help us with that. Uh, volunteer group oversight. Um, we have an amazing group of volunteers in the village. You know, the CRA cleans the beach. We've got friends of Mission Trail Nature Preserve. They're friends of Lester Roundtree. We have our amazing Carmel Cares group. And what what, again, I'll look to Mr. Richards, uh, what what he's talked about is a liaison, you know, and so this might be something that you say, Chip, add a person, add a human being, a one FTE uh on your staff to be a liaison between the departments, the department heads, and our volunteer groups. And so um this is something we, again, we can't ignore because the village would not be as beautiful as it is without our volunteer groups. Um, if we were clapping, we would do a little clap right now, but but uh thank you, volunteer groups, but this is again, a very important priority that we we can't take our eyes off. A review, reformulate approach, reserves, update our our financial policies. Again, you've made some incredible progress, council. You passed measure C with the public. You refinance this building to the, it will save a lot of money on the refinance. Um, you have a a long-term strategy for for addressing our 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 pension liability. Um, but we still have to go back and uh and look at our financial policies and update them. Is it a priority one right now? It it's not a priority ten, but maybe it's not a priority one at this point in time. Explore opportunities for permanent outdoor dining. Um, at your last meeting, or actually, no, it was at the February meeting, I believe. You you said that the outdoor seating areas can be maintained until April twentieth. April twentieth, at that point in time, the temporary structures have to be removed. However, you did say bring it back, so you will see it back on your agenda uh at the April meeting, and that that will provide an update. Will certainly provide you the opportunity to provide direction, but those are going away as of the twentieth. You also directed the planning commission to make this a priority, uh, priority project for permanent outdoor seating, not the temporary structures you see out there, but developing design guidelines if and where and why. So again, that that is, uh, that is on the list as well. Increased beautification efforts. Um, this is in progress. You know, we did one meet, uh, Ocean Eye, Ocean Avenue, Median Island. We'll continue to pluck away at that. I think that's an ongoing uh effort. Uh, review barriers to construction of affordable housing. You'll be awarding a contract. We've received about a hundred and ninety, hundred sixty-five.
Almost three hundred thousand.
There you go. Two hundred ninety-five thousand dollars in funding to review barriers to affordable housing. This information will also identify opportunity sites for affordable housing, and the data that we receive from this plan will help inform our housing element, which is due at the end of next year, at the end of twenty twenty-three.
That's right.
And um, and something else about it, too. Well, affordable housing, I mean, it's it's, you know, we're we're constantly receiving inquiries from people about where to live. Uh, the next one uh is called explore street addresses, and this is not to be confused with at-home letter delivery. The council made it very specific that you wanted to disassociate uh those two uh projects or priorities. You know, we recently learned that that the our local post office stopped stopped accepting packages uh vis a vis uh FedEx and and UPS and other carrier, UPS and other carriers. And um, um, Councilmember Felio says they may have flipped on that again, but um, it's unclear. I have a call into Congressman Panetta's office to see if we can get some help from a local post office. But the point is that it's it's, and a lot of you spoke very passionately about this at our last, last time we talked about this. It's very difficult to get a new financial advisor or get a passport or get your packages delivered without a street address. Would it be obligatory? Not necessarily. But we could go through the process of socializing it, and City Hall could be, you know, three oh one Monteverde Street. Uh, would people be obligated again to 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 sign their building? Not necessarily. But again, it's it's it's, you 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 elevated this because it's a relevant time to have that discussion. It's also important from the public safety standpoint. Chief Euler got here in October, and he said, what do you, what do you mean you don't have street addresses? Now, how, you know, obviously, our our public safety um officers have found a way to get to uh you know, situat- safety situations, but again, is is that the best model if someone has to come into the village and and help us out? So again, for your consideration, develop a facilities maintenance plan. Again, very, very important from the perspective that uh we need to be, we need to be depreciating our 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 built assets and and knowing when a uh a boiler is going to blow up. You know, we had a boiler in this building that was from nineteen seventy-seven way outside its lifespan. So again, if we know when things are about to break, we can budget and plan for them accordingly. Again, a document that'll help inform our CIP. Um, undergrounding, rule twenty A is is state legislation that obligates publicly traded uh facility uh utilities to put away a certain percentage of the uh fees that we pay them into a fund for future undergrounding. Again, uh, part of our city is undergrounded, part of it's not. So again, this this project made the list. A couple of projects that didn't make the highest level at our last um, our last discussion, they they were lower priorities were uh explore reinstating the design review board. And what you said, and I know Brandon's spoken with with some um uh interest groups, the CRA and other groups, about letting the design traditions one point five project help, let 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 that project help inform whether uh and what a DRB looks like. So again, I think we've got some pretty, pretty good consensus on on holding off on that until we delve further into the design traditions project. Explore redevelopment of the north lot at Sunset Center. So that's the lot to my left, to your right, and back of all of you. Um, it's it's a big, a big parcel that we own. It's uh, it provides the uh, the sequel required parking for this facility for events in Sunset Center, but it it's it's clearly a a real prime development site. So um, that that might be something you want to look at. Explore opportunities for Flanders Mansion and the Scout House, and that's why Mr. Tarbox keeps wanting to speak so urgently and 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 Mr. Byrne as well in their partnership. Uh, we've owned the Scout House since eight years before Brandon was born. And
Thanks for that.
Yeah, and and um, so again, we we uh, we we were going down the path of a master lease several years ago when the people we were negotiating with pulled out. And so again, that might be something you want to prioritize, to have us send out an RFP again and try to find a master tenant. I know there's some other ideas floating around, which this would be the forum to to lightly discuss those, I think. And the other is the Scout House. Unfortunately, I I was remarking to someone, we used to have our holiday party when I was here on my first offense. We used to have our holiday party upstairs with a blazing fire. It was, it was beautiful. Of course, the building is not ADA accessible. So again, would you like to prioritize sending out some kind of an RFP for someone to have a master tenancy or to rehabilitate it or to use the facility? Uh, the code does empower our community activities commission uh for providing some guidance on that. If you haven't seen Ashley's white paper on on the history of the building, it's it's a good read. And within that, she identifies the code sections that provide guidance, and I think you've also uh talked to the CAC about the future of that building as well. Thank you. And the last is uh develop a social media plan. We, I I don't feel that we can do enough communication with the public. Uh, we have a, uh, we have a varied uh, a varied public, and they receive their information a lot of different ways. And um, so developing a comprehensive plan on how to get people involved and stay involved in the community, not when there's just a big development. Was there, was there a big development on the planning commission agenda last night? I don't remember. Was there a?
Yeah, no, just a little small one.
Oh, that, that Fifth and Dolores, that's small, got it. And um, but getting more people involved in local government on a regular basis, and a social media plan might provide that kind of a vehicle. So that concludes my comments. I'm happy to answer staff's uh, happy to answer any questions about anything specifically, Mr. Mayor, and we can, we can go from there, sir.
Uh, council members, before I go to the public, are there any questions of Chip or Brandon at this time? I've got a couple here. Um, one is um on the ADU issue. Is there an affordability component attached to that where you track the affordability of these hell units?
No, sir.
I didn't think so. Okay. And then I noticed on the list of ADUs here, there's one that most of them seem to be moving on forward fairly expeditiously. They're a complete of it. There's one here, item number six, which is, which was issued a permit in two thousand and seventeen, and is listed as under construction. Seems to me it's not moving very diligently forward. What do you do to regulate that?
Um, look, if I may, real quickly, um, Brandon's been working with with our city attorney, Mr. Pyrick, on stalled construction projects, Mr. Mayor, and uh, and why don't you take it from there, Brandon?
Yeah, so um, I I have been, we, there's a couple of specific projects we're looking at, but we're working with our city attorney on uh call it a draft, a template sort of letter that we put all the information in the history of when permits were were received, when they expired, how long it's been stalled. Um, and we're crafting that so we can send it out to all those properties that we have in town that are like that. Um, we we plan on having that done here in the next couple of weeks, actually. Um, our city attorney's been putting a lot of effort into it so that it's a real airtight letter, and it's going to be coming from the city attorney, which is going to be a little extra oomph behind the letter. So uh, we are, we are excited to get that done.
You know, I think of part of design traditions, Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, is the um, the issue of of construction projects that that seem to languish on for forever. Mayor White and I, we used to remark, you know, a new house, I mean, I don't know how you you could build one in probably six months, Mr. Mayor. Your firm uh used to take about a year. Now they go on and they go for, you know, eighteen, twenty-four months before um some houses are done. So for design traditions and the zoning ordinance update will be an opportunity to 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 uh to spur them along, to see if there are opportunities to to not impact neighbors with job boxes and construction materials ad nauseam while all buildings are being built.
Appreciate that. Okay. Any other question? Karen?
I have a question about twenty-two. Under the twenty twenty-one status, it says uh you were notified by PG&E that about nine hundred thousand dollars allocated for city project might be reassigned next year if we don't identify a project. Do you want to comment on that?
Uh, I don't know, Fred, if you can speak to this, uh, Mr. Harari certainly can periodically. PG&E says you're not spending your money. So it takes a uh, an awful lot of money to underground utilities, and there are some high voltage wires that cannot be undergrounded because they'd have to have special cooling systems. But uh, again, they periodically do reallocate money to other jurisdictions, Mr. Mayor.
It really boils, it really boils down to to just that. The council has to identify what the project is. That is a sometime very laborious process because you have to think about the assessment district that you have to found at the same time because the the property owners have to pay for the undergrounding of their laterals, and that's normally done through an assessment district. So PG&E, you know, they have a pool of money. You can borrow forward if you have a project. So if in fact you're really serious about undergrounding, you need to decide fairly soon where, so you can actually identify it as a project and get it into the PG&E time table.
Yeah, it would seem to me that uh both beach lines going through Mission Trail Nature Preserve and up to the Flanders would be probably one of the most cost-effective projects because there's no pavement to.
That was a question. So yes or no? All righty. Yes, Jeff?
How should we think about all the work that we've already assigned you in the capital improvement project budget and this?
It's a good
The list of work that's on here.
It's a good question, sir. So for everyone's benefit that hasn't been intimately involved in this, the first couple of lists we had coalesced both the capital work, kind of our daily responsibilities, as well as these more advanced, advanced projects.
On the screen right now, so.
Yeah, so what you had us do at your last meeting was to to parse those apart. So we're we're uh, we're trying to hire a project manager or project managers. They would be people responsible or a person responsible for implementing the capital work. They would not be working on on any of these uh in particular. They'd be working on the uh, the funded and appropriated um capital projects, implementation phase, the outreach and education certainly, but the implementation phase. So I wouldn't uh, I I wouldn't suggest, since you peeled them apart already, sir, I wouldn't suggest that you put them back together.
Thank you.
Any other questions by council members? I don't see anybody. All right, I'll open up the, for public comment and questioning by the public is an opportunity for anybody in the public to come forward and speak to any item that's on this list related to priorities for the council to consider. Great opportunity for you to lobby for your cause to let. So please step
I'm here, Mr. Mayor.
Is that awesome? Uh, what we'll do is we'll go with the present, public's present here, and then we'll go to the outside world, those that are on the street. Then we'll go to those that are on the internet. So those that are in the room here, please, who would like to step forward first, say your name for the record. There's a three-minute limitation on that testimony.
Please go ahead and move up to the microphone that's right here for us, so that we we can hear you and the folks on the Zoom can hear you as well.
It's the microphone.
My name is Gary Tolet. I live in Carmel Valley.
Very, could you, could you speak directly into mic? I'm sorry.
My name is, right close. My name is Gary Tolet. Thank you. Now that you know who I am, I live in Carmel Valley. Uh, I build tiny houses for affordable housing. I just wanted to say a few things, differences between an ADU and a tiny house on wheels. ADUs are a federal okay for the states to put secondary units on properties now. Um, but the property owner has to do it, and it has to stay with that property, the ADU that they build. The ADUs, uh, as well as any other construction, is now around four hundred dollars a square foot. Uh, tiny houses, I mean, ADUs are in the market of two hundred thousand to up above that. Tiny houses are in the market for somewhere between uh twenty thousand up to around a hundred and twenty thousand. Uh, the range that I'm in is between twenty thousand and six, six, sixty thousand. The differences are that tiny houses are owned by somebody who buys them, so they're providing the affordable house. Take it to a property where somebody can't afford to build, you know, just doesn't want to build an ADU and make a deal to be able to lease the land for hookups and so forth. The difference is that tiny houses haven't been in the market as long as our house, our way of building. So there are no rules for tiny houses on wheels and to properties. But there are beginning to be rules because the tiny house, when it's bought for the way they they finance them now, about five, five percent down and uh, twenty-three years to pay for. So your payments are maybe five hundred to fifteen hundred for a down payment, and you're in your own home, your payments are probably two or three hundred dollars. Then add maybe six hundred dollars for a spot to put it, makes it affordable. You're at about eight hundred dollars, a third of your income. Your income is fifteen dollars an hour, and you're buying a house. It's yours. Things fall apart, you can leave. You can take your house with you, so you still have. You can take your house with you, so you still have a house. So tiny houses are being brought to you to fix the problem. It will fix the problem.
Sir, there's there's a three minute limitation in your testimony. I'm sorry.
That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Normally, we have a visual where it runs a clock, but I don't think we have that capability tonight, do we?
All right.
It's unfortunate. All right, yeah, I shouldn't know. If you could make sure it beeps accordingly, that'd be great. All righty, next speaker from the inside.
Thank you, sir, Mary Gifford. Just a question, could you clarify? Could you clarify how much money you say will be allocated for affordable housing and where that money came from?
Okay, Mary, we'll take that question under submission and answer it once everybody else has their questions asked and answered. Thank you. Next question, next person. Mary, did you have anything else?
No, that's all. I just wanted to know where the money's coming from and who said it was going to go to affordable housing versus something else the city needs?
Okay, so Mary, we'll answer that question when we're done with all testimony.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
Hey there, good afternoon, everybody. My name's Gabriel Joris. And this afternoon, maybe predictably, I'd like to address the ongoing conversation about the outdoor dining in downtown Carmel. I feel the outdoor dining that has popped up around Carmel during the pandemic has had a mostly positive impact on the feeling of the downtown. Guests and visitors seem to love it and most of the residents seem to as well. It has changed the often heard comments we hear around the downtown that Carmel rolls up its sidewalks at 5:00 P. M. And we now often more hear a comment about the feeling that the town has lived in. And this feeling of life and conviviality is the success of many European small towns. And I think it enhances our reputation as a destination and a place to visit. I do understand that the parklets were a temporary measure to help economically during a difficult time. And I'd like to commend the city council and the staff and the mayor for their forward thinking and allowing them during that time. And I also understand that not all businesses approached it with the same level of investment and taste and attention to detail. And that this may have soured some people's perceptions of the project. The program as it exists now may not be the best we can do, but I don't believe that means we're not capable of something better. Given a little time and planning and commitment from the business community, I think we can really enhance the beauty and the European feel of the downtown. I strongly urge the city council to keep the outdoor dining on the sidewalks and parking spaces once the temporary measure expire. And I'd like to see that continue as a priority item of discussion in the coming year. I would love to see a program that is refined and thought out and puts us at our best, a way for business owners to invest in a more permanent structures and and follow design guidelines that are in keeping with the charm of Carmel. A plan where flowered patios can help beautify the downtown and the warm sound of dinner conversation entices our visitors to stay and shop and walk the streets and prove the art galleries. Having outdoor dining will benefit everyone by making the town more attractive. The shopkeepers, I think, will see increased business. Landlords will have an easier time renting the now empty spaces that dot the downtown. The restaurants are more charming and do more business and the town will attract more hotel guests. And all of this creates revenue for the city and allows the city to make meaningful investments on the on the behalf of the residents. Being a native and lifelong resident of Carmel myself, I've witnessed many changes to our little community here. And although there's always been a measure of resistance to change, we have decided not to let that stop us in the past. And we pursue the vision for our quaint village by making changes like banning corporate chains or choosing to protect the trees from the ongoing construction projects. These changes make the town a nicer place to live and to visit. And I believe that outdoor dining is such a change and I strongly encourage you to see it through. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabriel. Next speaker. I do appreciate somebody adjusting the mic. Well done.
Hi, my name is Jill Peppker. I lived in Carmel for 18 years. I have one procedural comment and then some priority comments procedurally. It would be nice to know how many regulatory regulatorly required projects there are because if those have to be number one, then that would give us a sense of how many other projects could be number one if there's a limit on them. That doesn't seem to be flagged anywhere. But also, just in terms of priorities, my main priority for the city, I brought I brought an email, but in case not all of you have had time to read it, is really wildfire risk reduction. Not just to avoid something like paradise, even if you're not worried about that. I think we should all be worried about having available and affordable homeowners insurance, which, you know, wildfires is a growing concern for insurance companies. Undergrounding utilities, I don't know that it all has to be paid by PG&E and residents. I think the city could pony up some money for that. And if we do it over, let's say, a 20 year period, I think the cost could be manageable. I think the fire inspections, as they've been, have really not been adequate. We passed, we got a green status. We have a tree hanging over our house. That doesn't make any sense. They really need to be much more rigorous. And I think tying into, that was number three, the Monterey Fire Inspections. Number seven, about tree rules. I think if you have a tree hanging over your house, you got to be able to take it out. Even if it's next to your house, within five feet, you ought to be able to take it out to get a safety buffer zone. I think we really need to get serious about wildfire risk reduction. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Betty Coolis. My husband Bob and I live on Monteverde Street between second and third. And I'd just like to give you my top three reasons why we would love to have a house number. We don't advocate getting mail delivery. We don't care about that, but we'd just like to be findable, which is kind of the bottom line for us. I sent a list of all of my issues to the council a couple of years ago and the response that I got back was great. But it's my concern at that point was safety. And I was assured that in a, you know, a safety situation, we would be findable and we were not. We had a situation about a month ago where an alarm went off in our neighbor's house, motion detector, security company called the police. The police came to my house. I went and met them at the door. I could see them peeking in my windows. We spoke and we realized that they had counted the house on the corner as number one. Where to? The next house, it was really the house they needed to go to. The house on the corner faces Third, not Monteverde. It's very complicated to try and figure out where we are in this town. If it had been a medical emergency, I don't want people standing out in the street, emergency people counting houses to try and figure out who's having a heart attack. Our second issue is deliveries. My husband needs medication every four months. He needs to get a shot. It's $13,000 a dose. It needs to be sent overnight. We can't take a chance on having UPS or FedEx deliver it because they often leave it at the wrong house. If it gets delivered to the post office by the time they sort it, put the green yellow card in my box, we find the yellow card, it needs to be refrigerated. So we have no way of making sure that we're actually going to be able to get that medication. There's all kinds of problems with deliveries, even our local delivery people. We just had a person dying in our neighborhood. I had three people, one from Nielsen's, two from Tiger Lily knocking on my door. It's not even the right block to deliver things for the bereaved person. The last thing, as Chip mentioned, is financial institutions. We are constantly in a battle with banks, financial people, because we don't have a physical address. We were on the phone last week for almost two hours because we needed to make a very minor change to a contract. And our physical address, one northeast of Third, doesn't work on their system. And they just wouldn't accept the change. So I don't care about getting house delivery. I just would like very much to be findable.
Thank you, Betty. Next speaker.
Now, Ken White, if I may be so bold to make a suggestion, that is, it would be easier for the public if you would take each of these in numbers, starting with number one, two, three in order, so that we would have an opportunity to know when we were going to be able to get up. Second thing, I have a question to ask. And I thank the staff for putting this great food display on. How in the hell am I asked on, I was supposed to eat this thing? Paid parking is the subject to CRA. I'm going to speak for that. This will be the third iteration of that in the last 20 years, paid parking. The first time that we tried it back in the 90s, 90s, we hired a firm, Schlumberger, a big company to come in. They did a massive job of studying the number of parking spaces, the in and exits to the city. They did a wonderful job in a report. And it lasted, oh, probably about a year and a half to almost two years of public discussion. Some Schlumberger was there at every one. We paid them. That report is in city council chambers in the record somewhere. And I beg you, do not go into this too deeply and upset the public and get this thing going without reading that report and knowing what you're talking about. That's really important. The second time we tried it, a number of years ago, we had the same discussion, paid parking. Many of you remember that. The top, the public was up in turmoil most of the time, discussions, paid parking, is it Carmel or not? That ended with no result either. So this one, I say, for God's sakes, read the report, find out, know what you're talking about before you go too much farther. You're wasting a lot of time if you don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Next speaker.
Tim Blongren, Fifth and Torres, Third Northeast. I, a couple of issues here. First off is I have to truly commend the council and Chip for in updating the zoning code, having a having a timeframes for completion of projects. That 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 was something, as Chip and I have talked numerous times, something that was desperately needed in our community and my neighborhood. And I'm just so so thrilled that this is this is coming to fruition. So I give you a huge thumbs up on on that one. Second one is is the improvements on the on the library. As 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 these, it's not on the the for this fiscal year, it's not. But I've talked to Alexander Fallon on on Tuesday about this. And they're going to be, from my understanding, that they're going to be, from her conversation with her, it's going to be from 22 and 23, fiscal year of 22 and 23, which those are going to be. Is there going to be kind of a a timeframe or is that a when those are being, those projects are being introduced to the budgeting process and kind of when is that? I'm just curious if staff or or Chip or somebody could address that? Anybody? We're good?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Yeah, once once all the questions are in, we'll be answering them. Let's staff go to those questions. Thank you.
Is that good? Great. Hello, I'm Mayor, council members, Tim Toomey here, representing the Carmel Residents Association Board of Directors. And again, thanks, thanks for putting this list together. It's very comprehensive and all the work, Brandon, that you've done behind the scenes with your spreadsheet. Yeah, that's that's great stuff. And I think it'd be really helpful to help keep things on track and trending. So I'm just going to speak to a couple of the items. First one is the number eight with the the winners project. And again, we just want to thank you so much for pulling this together. And great contract, Brandon. I mean, it was comprehensive. It's got all the pricing, the timing, everything's in there. So, you know, kudos to that. You know, we totally support ongoing commitments to be active participants in the process. And in the steering committee idea that you put together, you know, we totally support too. So we're looking forward to that. And we would definitely recommend you move this to number one, priority number one. The other item is explore number 17. And in looking at that one, and I think some of the council members might have addressed this previously, that, you know, this this really requires, you know, more work as far as like maybe master, you know, how to fit into a master plan of downtown. Or more importantly, how does it, how is it informed by the outcome of the winners project? You know, with the new design guidelines and the new ordinances, it would think, you know, zoning ordinances, you would think that you'd have to have that in place before we could go after looking at permanent outdoor dining. So, you know, for that reason, I would put it low on the list because I think it's contingent upon and interdependent, you know, upon those other things. And then when you look at items one, 17 and 24, they all seem to be, you know, somewhat connected. And, you know, again, I think this has been discussed previously, but how do they fit into, you know, a master plan? And, you know, how are they dependent on one another? So I would just recommend, as you look at those three, you know, keep that in mind and prioritize in recording, right? Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Next speaker.
Yes, thank you. My name is Maria Bennett. And I'm addressing and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the, your honor, the mayor and the city council and staff. I want to thank Chip over here for returning my phone call. So I do appreciate that, Chip. He encouraged me to come down, so here I am. So I'm addressing the ambulance and I want to know if I heard it right. Did I hear that that's the ambulance, the new ambulance is on your list, right? I was outside, so I have to check on myself and hear and understand that I heard that was on the list. Is that, am I correct? So am I, am I to assume you're you're looking into buying a new ambulance? Is that?
Maria, we'll get to the specifics of your question when we're done with all public testimony. Thank you.
Okay. And so my contribution or what I would like to convey is, first of all, I want to thank all the first responders because they're marvelous in the lift program that we have here in Carmel. But the ambulance with regard to strokes and a monitor, the heart monitor for an ambulance, an ambulance probably costs, I haven't been outpricing it, but I'm going to throw a figure out there, of 200,000 maybe. And I don't know where you're going to find money for that. So I suggest the idea and the concept that you investigate a heart monitor, or I'm using layman's language, whatever machinery it takes to track the heart and communicate to the hospital. Because my primary interest is strokes and strokes. You have to get the victim to the hospital within a very certain time limit anywhere, depending on what the delay is on the part of the victim. But within two hours, and they've got to do the operation, find the clot, and that's got to be completed within three hours. It's a very timely thing. But in my interest for a proper heart monitor with regard to stroke victims, which we do have here in our community, majority of elderly people and seniors. But the strokes are not limited to them only. So what I'm saying is to widen the scope and the interest and benefit of a heart monitor, which would upgrade the the ambulance concept and vehicles significantly. If you had the heart monitor as a prime interest because it assists in almost all diagnosis. I'm not a nurse, I'm not a doctor, but I am a former Medicare administrator and currently a caregiver. So I, it comes close to my heart with the clients and people I take care of. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Maria, for your testimony. I appreciate it.
I think that the money would be well spent. I don't know how long it would take you to raise 200,000, 300,000 dollars for a new ambulance.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Lynn Ross. This is a great presentation and I really appreciate it. Regarding recruitments and managing visitor traffic, a real scenario, and I don't see it anywhere in the master plan, is that Carmel might not need as many recruitments if or when Carmel loses its uniqueness. It's happened to other towns. They lose their uniqueness and they they lose their cash. We don't want modern buildings, save Carmel. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
We don't want this. This is bad news, right next to the Carmel Art Association. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potter and members of city council. My name is Linda Calafiore and I have been a resident of Carmel by the sea for almost. My name is Linda Calafiore, and I have been a resident of Carmel by the Sea for almost 18 years. I have silently observed from my home most city council meetings since I became a member of the Community Activities Commission over five years ago. With respect to the priorities under consideration, I would encourage you to make a more targeted look as to which priorities are more of a routine, general, good management responsibility and move them to the city administration. I would encourage the council to spend their limited time on focusing on the big picture. Who we want to be in the future. And I would encourage you to consider that an important component of that future is that we be a vibrant and welcoming community and not a dying one. What this means to me is that we do everything possible to encourage our residents and business community to thrive by eliminating excessive procedures and regulations. Encouraging the vibrancy and hospitality to me means we allow our future residents and neighbors to build the type of houses they want to live in, as long as these houses are within cities guidelines. I'm in full support of our state mandate that we do more to make affordable housing more accessible to our community. If Carmel is truly a community for residents, then why are we not embracing ways to maximize our available housing stock? This question leads me to bring up the use of Flanders Mansion and the Scout House. I don't believe that we need more community meeting space or an event space or museum. If we say we need more housing stock, why are we not looking at creative ways to have these deteriorating city assets support this important goal? Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your testimony.
Thank you for the opportunity for us residents to speak out today. I'd like to go down the list of priorities from my perspective. Number eight, of course, update the zoning code and design guidelines. And I'm so delighted that the contract is now approved for Norrie Winter and Company. And that, of course, leads to develop ADU ordinance. I know that the state is mandating what it is. But what's happening now very quickly is that a lot of the new designs coming through the planning commission are with ADUs that make it the area much more covered than the 45% originally. The projects are much larger than they were before, and so it is impacting our, our look in Carmel. Also exploring permanent outdoor dining. I think it can be very attractive and festive if done correctly, and I'm sure you'll be able to do that. Increasing beautification efforts with Carmel Cares and other groups, I think that's happening very nicely. Underground utilities, of course, we all want that and the cost is high. Reinstatement of the Design Review Board, I think, is critical. And I agree that Mr. Winters and group may be able to address that adequately. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, council and, and rest of folks here. My name is Nancy Toomey. I'm speaking on behalf of the CRA board. When I want to call out the item number six, the Climate Action Plan and Adaptation Plan. I want to thank Kerry Tice, Jeff Barron, and Anyas and the whole team that's a part of that committee. They've done some remarkable work. What I'm concerned about is that we are adequately planning for staffing and costs looking at next year. So that just needs to be a part of the budget action, a budget task ahead of us. Also wanted to call out on the forest management plan and update the tree ordinance. But I wrote an article recently that some of you might have seen. And I want to reinforce that we really have to care for our forest in the village by the sea. Allah Barbara Livingston. We have to contribute and care for all of those trees. It makes a huge difference to our experience here as residents as we walk around the village. And it really adds to the charm for our visitors as well. So that cannot go unattended. So I strongly, we strongly support that as well. Wanted to also call out that, I think, as was mentioned before, that a lot of these items interrelate with the overall look and feel and charm of the city. And that is essential to those of us who are residents. And we need to look at many of these items as they are interrelated in the planning and prioritization. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Next speaker.
Greetings, Mayor, City Council Members, elected officials, chief. Thank you very much for having us today. My name is Eric Tarbox. I'm the Deputy CEO of the Silicon Valley Monterey Bay Council Boy Scouts of America. In your packets, in each of your packet, that is with this cover, there is a PowerPoint presentation printed out that I will go through quickly. I apologize, we're not able to show it today. We're here to talk about the Carmel Scout House. I assume many of you know the background, built in 1931 by MJ Murphy for use by the scouts. Home to multiple Cub Scout packs, Girl Scout troops. Many civic organizations have used it since 1931. And it was, in fact, added to the city's historic inventory in 2002 under the history of public and civic fabric of the community, which is interesting. In 2012, the Monterey Bay Council merged with Santa Clara County Council. In 2016, from what we understand, drawings and permits to update the ADA access and to reopen it for the city were approved. But for some reason, permits were not pulled. In 2019, the white paper that Ashley wrote was written in 2019. It's also in your packets. And in late '21, local business owners made us aware that this is an asset that needs to be brought back. And would we, the Silicon Valley Monterey Bay Council, be interested? So we're a 501(c)(3) organization. We serve nearly 9,000 young people, 4,000 volunteers through a volunteer executive board of which one of us is here today. Thank you very much, Mr. Baird, for being here. We are in a strong financial position post pandemic and post BSA national bankruptcy as found in the annual report that is also in your packet. We serve boys and girls, K to 12. In fact, multiple female Eagle Scouts, including the first one from Monterey County, Olivia Perriman, who just got her eagle since we invited girls to earn Eagle Scout a couple of years ago. We desire to reestablish the Carmel Scout House as an asset to the community. We have two strategic objectives that we want to share with you after that background. We want to restore the historic community asset and its uses as an event, event space for village nonprofits and civic orgs, private and public events, celebrations, performances, dance, yoga, exercise space. We are eager to partner with others like Carmel Cares and other organizations who also wish to do this. Our other objective is this is going to be a boon to the scouting brand. It's his historic and proud location for scouting. We'd like it to be a center of training volunteers, welcoming families, cultivating relationships, and to strengthen our central co-scouting brand. So we'd like to serve the village and scouting because that's who we are. We are proposing to invest in and manage renovation per ADA and city guidance in concert with city recommendations.
Eric, your time is up. If you'd summarize briefly.
Okay, we want to, we want to execute it quickly. We want to pay for it. We'd love to work with the city. We appreciate anything that you all would like to do to help us do that.
Appreciate the positive close. Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Right, and Mayor, Council, community, two items. The first, just on the paid parking. I want to say that I agree with Honorable Mayor Suma Cloud, who mentioned something a few months ago that if we do a paid parking program, we should seriously consider having the significant revenues from that program underwrite a community shuttle to take residents from their homes into town and back again. It would add to the number of parking spaces available to our visitors and make it a lot easier to sell the program to the residents. On the Scout House, which I've spent a lot of time on in previous years, and I am a adult leader of Scout Troop 127 in Carmel Valley. This is a great opportunity. The Boy Scout Council or the district is willing to spend all the money. The only thing we're asking the city for is to review and approve the plans. And I'd like to say, and this will bring the Scout House back to be actually handicapped accessible, back in operation for traditional users and uses. Regarding having to send out an RFP for the master lease. Several years ago, when working on this, I spoke with Joe Hedley, previous city planning official. And he said that since the scouts originally owned the house and had the master lease after ownership passed to the city, an RFP would not be necessary. You, the council, could assign the lease to the scouts for a dollar a year without going through a big public RFP procedure. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Rich Pepe. I just have a quick one. If I take them, light the tangerine while I'm talking, can I take the mask down? Sorry, I want to read something.
Time is running.
I want to, yeah, I want to read something from 1930 written by Joe Mora. In the, right here. Individualistic Carmelites have always taken sides on all issues. Petitions signed, charges made, recriminations hurled, friendships broken, hot air. Verbal, verbal abuse, fireworks. Ah, them were the happy days. Or is it the same today? That's from 1930. That's almost 100 years ago. And I thought it was really interesting. I saw it on the Joe Mora map, but what I want to say is thank you so much to the administration, the mayor, the council, and everybody who put this on for bringing us together so we can have a forum to speak, listen to you in a, in a, in an open, friendly way. And when I say word friendly, I mean, think about this. Look at all these wonderful people we have in this room. So thanks for bringing this back. And I really applaud you for that and giving us all the opportunity. Two things for me, what I heard just from maybe a few people, whether word historic and cultural, whatever you decide today to push your agendas forward, please don't forget those two words, why Carmel is here. Another word I heard from someone was change. Change might be good. Change is good. Well, you know, I got to be honest with you, change is also dangerous. When I ran for mayor 10 years ago, next month, 10 years ago, and gladly lost, our budget was only $12,000 and we were facing a $5 million deficit in the next five years. Today, your budget is more than doubled. You're over 25 million. I think I heard the word $27 million. So when somebody used the word dying village, I'm sorry, whoever said that, I don't see that one, one bit. All right, this village is as vibrant as you can, you can find on the planet today. So to double, more than double your budget in, in 10 years is astounding. And in conclusion, so I'm not here to speak on any specific issue, but I want to use the words of Barbara Livingston. And she said, you know, Carmel got here not by accident, but by design. So whatever you do today, you know, really be conscious of what you're putting forward in the future. And again, I applaud you for, for putting this on and I wish you all the best.
Thank you, Rich.
How do you follow, Rich Pepe? Mayor Potter, City Council Administrator Rarig, other city officials and fellow Carmelites. My name is Dale Byrne, and I'm speaking today as the Chief Caring Officer of Carmel Cares. For those of you who weren't at the last meeting, which was lightly attended, I might add. Mayor Potter started, much as Chip did tonight, talking about the importance of city support groups and, and the fact that sometimes they have to run into roadblocks. He talked about the $50,000 that the council advocated allocated for the safety improvements of the barrier fencing on seating pathway. He talked about the possibility of the city attorney finding a way to move that project forward since there isn't a project manager in the city, which also impacts paving roads and lots of other things. We didn't hear an update on that, and it would be interesting to know how close we are to that because that would impact some of the things we're trying to do. So hopefully we can, if we haven't hired a project manager, we can still find a way to help us complete that project. It's our strong opinion that the city needs to assign a higher priority to funding public works to a level required to properly maintain and protect our natural resources and assign a champion, as was discussed tonight, thank you, for city support groups that want to assist in that effort. To help these groups find not only money in the budget, but also actively prioritize their donor funded activities in a way that's aligned with and encouraged by city goals. Just like the city, Carmel Cares has a spreadsheet of prioritized projects as well. There's a difference between talking about community engagement and connecting and empowering residents who want to help. They want to make a difference in our community and are just asking for the city to support them, not just with platitudes, but with actionable assistance in working through the logjam city support groups encounter. Today, we're asking for the city to clearly designate someone to coordinate ongoing and future volunteer projects and clear the path for passionate, dedicated and highly capable volunteers. Volunteerism is contagious and a great way to connect with and protect our beautiful village. It's clear that Carmelites and visitors are willing to assist with financial support, but they also make it clear often that they, they must also expect more support from the city. Thanks for letting the public attend these meetings. It's the only opportunity we really have to see the inner workings of the entire city management team and participate in goal setting. It's heartening to see such a large group actively involved tonight. Thank you. And by the way, I think that Chip deserves a round of applause for running this meeting. Two years ago, I think we paid a fair amount of money to have a professional facilitator. And I think Chip is doing just as well as that person did, except for the flip charts and the dots. But thank you, if we could give him a round of applause. And also, I didn't see the street sweeper. Is that going to be discussed? I know you can answer. We do need a street sweeper and I advocate strongly for that. Thank you.
Dale, thank you for that schmooze. Is there anybody else wishing to speak? Yes.
Mayor Potter, members of the council, staff and members of the public. My name is Peter Baird. I'm a resident of Carmel, have been for 44 years. We've raised a family here and have been part of and enjoyed being part of the community. I don't come to a whole lot of meetings, don't come to ask a whole lot of things, but at this point in time, I really feel strongly the Carmel is missing an element that has been a part of the city for many years, a cherished part of the city, and that is the Boy Scout Program. And I know this because I was the scout master for many years in Carmel. And I had the, the privilege to see young boys come into the program and leave the program as men. Men that learned integrity and character, truth, in a lot of life skills. And those same people are in our community right now, contributing to the community, many of which, as my two boys are, are Eagle Scouts. We've gone a generation essentially without a scouting program here, and it's, it's unfortunate. I left the program as a scout master. But oftentimes, things don't continue to run as we'd like them to. The Scout House that we have right now is a dark, empty, cold space, and it doesn't deserve to be. What we need to do is to resurrect that for its namesake use, and that is a Boy Scout Program. The scouts have been involved on many levels in the city of Carmel, leading the parade, presenting the colors. And we need the tenants of scouting in this community, maybe today more so than ever before. The program that we're offering, and it can only be for a limited time, is to, as Mr. Tarbox had said, we'll pay our own freight, we'll cover the cost of the ADA, we'll cover the cost of permits. We'll do all of that work and we'll do it on our dime. There's no regulatory requirements. There's no fiscal requirements on the part of the city. Let's move that up and get it done. We have the bandwidth the scouting program does right now. And so I ask you to move that up and do that for the community. And, and not only the community, but probably Chip for his annual seasonal holiday parties in front of the roaring fire. But let's open this up and let's please, let's please put the scouts back into the Scout House. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Peter. Mayor White, you've testified once before, so I think.
Ignorance, I did not realize I could speak to more than one item.
You made a minute left in your testimony. Ken, you can run a minute.
Well, I want to compliment Pepe for his nice upbeat comments that were well deserved. Can you imagine I'm a resident working with a businessman? Things have really changed in this town. I'd like to give you the reason why Design Review Board is so important. Is the planning commission is reaching new levels of applications for building projects. The Design Review Committee can be a line in between the commission and the department and the builder and the owner and the architect. I hear frustrations all the time about having meetings, changes made, back and forth, back and forth, and sometimes the citizens get frustrated. The design review can be a great counseling, a great counseling area of decision making and having the design and architect comes in initially moderated down to fit our design standards.
Thank you, Ken.
Good addition and we should have one.
Thank you, Ken. Next speaker.
Mayor Potter, members of the council, city staff, Chip, Brandon, everybody else. Thank you very much for this wonderful forum. It's nice to see so many people here speaking on so many subjects. And I'm going to keep mine to a single subject, and that is the beautification of the natural beauty of Carmel. There are, we did one median and the plans are afoot to do, restore or remodel the rest of the medians in Ocean Avenue. Those have been done with the funds that have been garnered by renting out the parking spaces for the temporary dining area. But that's going to come to an end. And the concern is that after April 20th, when we have all the money that we have, is that going to cover the maintenance of the medians once they've been refurbished? Beyond that, there are other small areas around town that do need some attention. And I just encourage everybody to look at them, take note of them, maybe make a little list of them. And if there's anything we can all do to pitch in and make Carmel just look a little bit better, I think it would help. I concur with most of all the other comments tonight. As far as the Scout House goes, I danced there when I was in high school. My parents had their 50th wedding anniversary there. When I was doing Greek folk dancing as a performer, we had a wonderful Greek come and teach us some new dances. We use the Scout House for many, many things. I support you wholeheartedly and I hope it goes through. Thank you again for tonight.
Thank you for your testimony.
I'm Carleen Whittlesey and I've been told to inform you that any opinions that I may express this afternoon are my own and not of an individual or charitable organization that I may be associated with. It is not that I'm being negative. It's only that Carleen cares. I was also told to write it down and make it short. First of all, I would like to express my gratitude to the council for inviting us to bring our long list of concerns to discuss this afternoon. The gripe I have chosen to discuss with you concerns the far reaching power of the Carmel Uglification Committee. I know that this committee exists because when I bought my sweet little Carmel cottage on Seventh Avenue last April, I looked out the large upper window facing the street and counted 27 ugly wires, 27. And if I walked around the corner down Casanova Street before I get to Eighth Avenue, there are two homes with 20 foot high tree stumps sprouting wires hanging over the street. I think I've got a picture. Maybe some of you are seeing that. I don't know if that's been distributed. At any rate, I want you all to realize that I have surpassed my neighbors' uglification efforts in this regard. You see, I fuel my little electric car and I needed to install a 240 volt plug in my driveway that caused me to upgrade my 100 amp to a 200 amp. And this caused the little one inch electrical pipe to turn into a three inch pipe that travels across the upper front of my home and continues down the entire roofline of my fairy tale cottage. At the very front of this peak, an ugly cap hangs over the edge, sprouting a bouquet of three ugly wires, one white, one black, one red. It's probably the ugliest thing you have ever seen in Carmel. And if the uglification committee doesn't currently exist, I'm obviously well qualified to head it up. Now, I've been told that there is an individual and/or charitable organization who is currently making a strong effort to bury all this ugliness. However, there are some objections since a tree may occasionally be damaged in the process and funds will need to be provided to replace any damaged trees. Our wildlife may also disapprove since our squirrel community will obviously object to the dismantling of their high wire freeways. I want to make one thing perfectly clear. There is absolutely no greater accomplishment that this council can achieve to enhance the beauty and charm of Carmel than to make sure these ugly lines are buried.
Thank you, Carleen. Is there anybody else in the room wishing to testify before I go to the Zoom world? Or anybody outside? I don't see anybody. I'll open it up to Zoom world.
And Mr. Mayor, Sebastian's standing by. He can see the Zoom, so he can call out people in order if you'd like. Who raised their hand?
Lovely.
Here I am.
Okay, yes. Phone number ending in 53. Go ahead.
Hi, it's Parker Logan. Thank you very much. Well, you've got a lot of agenda items on here. Probably one could be removed so we could add some more time from the many others that are more important. Specifically, you know, when we talk about the essential part of the character of our village. Village is repeated over and over and how charming the character of Carmel is. Doesn't seem like there's a place for parking meters or paid parking in that equation. Been tried and failed, tried and failed. You know, the potentially is going to make visitors have a less enjoyable experience, perhaps even dissuade some from returning or driving locals from shopping down at the barnyard rather than pulling up to an easy place in town. You know, you're only welcome. I don't know what to say there. Anyway, it's a bad idea to have these things. You know, the millions and millions of dollars are being generated. Should cover the cost to keep Carmel's charm and just keep it the way it is. We're not hurting for money. We shouldn't be always looking for some conquest on how we can get more money. Like Pepe said, the city budget has nearly doubled in 10 years. We're not like running to the coffers to, to plant a tree and barely get by. We don't need to have this and it's probably going to come with a lot of backlash from a lot of locals and a lot of visitors. Just dissuades from how charming our village is. So if you want to talk about the essential part of our character, we should just dump this whole idea altogether. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Parker, very much. Appreciate it. Anybody else out there wishing to speak?
Yeah, we've got Jack Galante raised his hand and then after that will be Susan.
Thank you.
Jack, you can go ahead and unmute.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thanks so much for allowing me to talk. I'm really addressing kind of the zoning review and kind of the pandemic relief as well. I'd just like to request that you implement a variance for the wine tasting room businesses in Carmel by the sea to allow outdoor tasting in ABC permitted private patio areas while the city is reviewing and hopefully amending the zoning for wine tasting rooms in the general plan update process. Wine tasting rooms are currently zoned as retail businesses, as you know. And this zoning is completely contrary to the California Department of Alcohol Beverage Control, which states that wine tasting rooms are specifically not retail locations. Our current zoning limits our primary purpose, which is tasting wine, where we educate our customers on our winemaking philosophies, our growing regions and our brands. And here's some of the main reasons why I'd like to request this action. May through October are the busiest months for our businesses. As we come off of COVID restrictions, we are requesting additional assistance as you've provided others in this area. Also, a vast majority of our customers are still much more comfortable in an outdoor setting than in a tasting room inside. This, I believe, is a permanent change that we are facing. Our spaces are traditionally much smaller than other retailer restaurant spaces and thus are more confining. We will unquestionably lose business and fart tasting rooms are perceived as overcrowded. And this already occurs when our small patio spaces are full. Due to our retail zoning category, we are already limited to 30% of our indoor space to be used for our primary purpose, which is wine tasting. No other business category in town has such a restriction. Restaurants are allowed to serve wine, beer and spirits in their private outdoor spaces and wine is only one of the items of many that they serve. It's the only item wine tasting rooms serve. This provides an inherently unfair advantage and in itself is discriminatory. Wine tasting rooms serves a fraction of the alcohol that's served every restaurant bar in Carmel by far. Customers consume or taste the equivalent of an average of seven ounces of wine at a tasting room. On a, on the busiest days, this could be one or two cases of wine. There's no impact to other businesses or residents in using private patio spaces as opposed to using public spaces. And finally, there is no cost to the city in allowing tasting rooms to use their private patio spaces and no negative impacts. Any increased sales from outdoor tastings would only benefit the city through increased tax revenue. And we appreciate all of the difficulties facing the city council, but we do also want you to appreciate the unique difficulties facing our businesses as well and provide us with fair treatment and policies and to serve, help our businesses recover.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you. Appreciate it and thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay, Susan had her hand up and then after that we've got Dawn Galante.
All right. Thank you all, Mr. Mayor and council members for creating this forum to listen to the residents of the community. Really useful. I live on Crespey Avenue along Mission Trail Nature Preserve. And so obviously trees and fire are really high importance. But I actually want to address just, focus on just one on the list, which is number 20, concerning street addresses. As was mentioned earlier, it's, it's very important for public safety. And some of my neighbors actually think, oh, the police have a list of each house by description and can find us anyway, which apparently is not actually the case. But it's, it's also something that affects all of us daily, not just when there's an emergency. Not having addresses that are recognized by Google costs all of us countless hours, setting up utilities and financial accounts, looking for lost packages, ordering things to be delivered, which obviously in the last couple of years has become incredibly important to all of us. And complicating things further, at least on our street, is that the neighbors don't even agree on how to count. So we are either number eight or number nine, depending on whom you ask. So it just, I really encourage, once there's a staff person in place who can deal with this, to just get some, get a system set up that will benefit everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got Dawn Galante up next and then Joe Todd. If you are on the phone and want to raise your hand, it is star nine.
Welcome, Dawn.
Sorry, I had to get myself unmuted here. Thank you. Thank you to the mayor and the council members for all the hard work that you do. I would like to also address the rezoning and pandemic topics. As Jack mentioned, I would also like to request that you implement a variance for the wine tasting room businesses in Carmel by the sea to allow outdoor tasting in ABC permitted private patio areas while the city is reviewing and hopefully amending the zoning for wine tasting rooms and the general plan update. The pandemic has changed the way that we operate our businesses most likely forever. So the damage surrounding the loss of our private patio spaces is still as much a priority now as it was when the pandemic started. As mentioned previously, the wine industry has sustained quite a few hits over the last few years and we really are feeling the financial effects of not only what the pandemic has done to our businesses and employees, but also the loss of our 2020 vintage to the fires. I know the fires seem like far in the past, but I can tell you that that 2020 vintage is being sorely missed right now. Everything in the wine world takes years of planning to bring to you the beautiful wines that many of you enjoy. So missing even one vintage creates a huge issue for us financially and operationally as we scramble to figure this out. This is especially true for our wineries who operate their own vineyards, a double loss for them. What we are asking is not much and has no impact on, impact on the city. We need your support more now than ever. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn.
Okay, we have Joe Todd next.
Joe, the floor is yours.
Joe Todd, you can go ahead and unmute.
Joe.
I just wanted to add something about the, yes? This, I'm sorry, Joe Todd, resident.
We hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
I just wanted to add something about, okay. I just wanted to add something about the post office. You're spending time that's going to take a long time as far as getting addresses. And I know you're working on that, but in the meantime, something that could happen a little quicker could be if we had the hours changed, like now. It's been closed because of some vandalism, but now it's getting to be light. And she said it was just going to be temporary and obviously has not been just temporary. So I would like to have somebody investigate that as far as getting the hours changed for the post office in the meantime, while you're working on street addresses. And the other thing is that as far as the parking is concerned, if you could remind the businesses that they need to remind their employers and themselves to park away from their businesses. And that would help also as far as the parking for right now. I mean, there's always a problem with parking in Carmel. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it.
And the next person with their hand up is Neil Cruz. You just unmuted. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and council for this workshop. Also, I want to acknowledge staff for what must have been an incredibly huge workload and I think it's not over by a long shot. So a lot of work that these guys are putting in, they need to be appreciated for it quickly. Carol Hall and I of the Carmel Preservation Association meet every third Thursday in the farmer's market with the public. And something that has not been brought out before this time is that I would say a third of the people that comment to us are not residents, but are visitors. We have had multiple conversations where visitors have literally, in their own words, said, if you keep losing Carmel character, if you keep letting in these houses that don't look like Carmel, we won't be coming anymore. That's why we come, to see a community that is different than all the others. Pretty soon, you're going to look like anywhere USA. So the only point I wanted to make with this is that the village character is actually going to have a financial impact on the city. And if we lose the visitor traffic, that is obviously going to, to put a hardship on Carmel. So I invite all of the council and mayor and those who wish to just come and stand by the booth at Farmer's Market third, third Thursday of the week. And you will overhear these conversations with visitors from Carmel. So I just wanted to make the point that there is a financial aspect to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Neil. Anybody else?
I'm not seeing anybody else with their hand up. Go ahead. It's at the bottom of the screen. Under reactions, you can raise your hand or star nine if you're on a phone. Not seeing anybody unmuting, Mr. Mayor.
All right. I'll ask, is there anybody else in the room here that wanted to testify that came in late? I don't see anybody. That noted, then I will close the public comment period and bring it back to council for discussion direction. There were several questions asked of you. I know you and Brandon have been taking copious notes, so you'd be good enough to address those concerns. I'd appreciate it.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think Brandon, maybe we can tag to them. Mrs. Gifford talked about money, money for affordable housing. Just, just to be very clear, the council has not approached. Just, just to be very clear, the council has not appropriated any funds specifically to build or to supplement affordable housing in the village. What we have done is we've gotten grants from the state of California to look at what are the barriers to affordable housing? Why can't we? I mean, you know, some of them are obvious, right? The cost of land, the fact that there's no water. So hopefully the consultant that Brandon hires is going to look beyond that and say, you know, here, you know, our zoning, our zoning height limits and those kinds of things. So Mrs. Gifford, I think left, but to be clear, we're not, we're not planning on spending any money on affordable housing at this point in time. So it's number one. I think we can, that's not my lungs, it's the, it's the microphone rubbing against the mask, but it was falling out of my head. So just see if you're wondering. We, we can, I think we can, we can, did you, did you count the number of regulatory responsibilities?
I can do that pretty quickly.
I'll keep going on then. Library improvement. So again, what we, what we did was we pulled the capital projects out of this master planning list. And that was the same as someone talked about, the nice lady, Mrs. Bennett, about the ambulance, our rolling stock. That's not a priority area. Those are part of our cap. We, we have a vehicle replacement fund, right? So we pay for fire engines and ambulances and police cars and other, you know, tractors and all that wonderful stuff that we own. So this list does not include rolling stock or capital and projects such as improvements to the, to the library. Just to refresh everyone's memory, the council has a contractual relationship with the library board who they appoint. And it says that we are responsible for carpeting and painting and all those kinds of things, some of which we've neglected over the years. But again, that feeds into the facilities management plan. That if we had a recipe to follow, you would know some of the things that you should be doing or obligated to be doing on a regular basis rather than when they, when they break or burn out or die.
And Chip, the number of regulatory requirements is six. One of those being the sign ordinance that's ninety-five percent updated done and the climate action plan, which is eighty-five percent on this list. And the rest of them are not either regulatory in nature, but we can decide on some of them, like the accessory dwelling, you know, when we do it. So it's, it's a small number.
Okay, thank, thank you, Brandon. Thank you. I'm just, Mr. Mr. Byrne talked about the street sweeper as well. That'd be another piece of rolling stock that wouldn't be on this list, but it would be part of our capital, capital vehicle replacement fund. And the last item is Mr. Creighton asked about sole sourcing and he spoke to Joe Hedley. Joe Hedley was our building official who, who left many years ago. I, I'm, I, I would tend to disagree with Mr. Hedley. I'll work with the city attorney about sole sourcing a public asset like the scout house, but I welcome the comment. Thank you. And, and thank you all for, for your wonderful input and, and feedback. We're very grateful. So I think that answers the question, Mr. Mayor. Did I miss anything?
Mayor White wanted to know how to eat the food. Oh, yeah. So it was, it was a trick to try to trick you to go outside, Mayor White. But no, I wanted, the reason I said something because Nancy too, me actually brought most of that food. The city brought some too. But if it's something you eat and you like, Nancy brought it. If it's something you, you don't like, it's probably from us. So thanks, thanks Nancy.
All right. I'd like to echo the same comments and concerns that were expressed earlier about the public's participation today. It's very, very impressive. I mean, this is our first, it's only our second in-person meeting. It's Karen Felido's first council, second council meeting, which is actually in attendance in the public arena. We've been zooming far too long. And I think it's been a real testimony to the community's concerns about what's going on here, that we've got such great attendance tonight. So thank you all. I really appreciate that. What I would do is I'll bring us back to council for possible directions. I don't think we're going to go ahead and say that we're going to pick something special tonight. But I think if you want to echo concern to bring up areas of interest that we want to go through the list and pick out things that we're specifically concerned with, I think that's a good direction to go on tonight. So I'll look to my colleagues. I could kick it off with a couple of things I was thinking of. One is the ADU issues. I do think we're going to be forced to look at ADUs, but I don't think we're going to concentrate on the affordability aspect right now. And so I think we need to make sure that if we go ahead and create any ordinance, that there is a mandated affordability component here. We're just not building second units that people can rent for more money. The other issue was, there was some talk about wine tasting in the parking area. I mean, they're in the public patio areas that they're on private property, not public property. I don't, I think that might bear looking into. And as far as going ahead and having discussions about future parklets, I think that was the suggestion that we could roll that into updating the zoning ordinances and the design standards. I think that's a good suggestion. The Scout House and the Flanders Mansion, I think there's probably possibilities for both of those buildings that haven't been discussed. If council people were interested in picking up a specific project for the interest of them, I think that'd be interesting. I'd be willing to go ahead and say I'd be willing to take a look at the Flanders House. Have some conversations with some people that might be interested in that. Bobby, you had an interest in the Scout House, I thought at some time. Yes, we could have individually be an ad hoc committee of one perhaps. But I do think it's an opportunity for people to have somebody sort of the council conduit to bring discussions forward. Just a suggestion, but. Other council members?
Well, I'll go ahead there. The, um, yeah, I thought it was interesting about the Scout House coming up so much tonight. And I guess my question to you, Brandon or Chip would be, what, what would it take to, to get somebody in there to, to start working on that? Or, you know, like to get a lease like that? Like, how much effort would it take on, on the city staff part?
Well, I think, I think it would be very similar to what we recently did for the Forest Theater, which is preparing the improvements that we would require, the level of maintenance, the level of insurance, so the level of investment, much like we did for Flanders as well, sir. And then we would send out an RFP and, and basically ask people to, to reply to it, to respond. This is how we're going to go about it. For Forest Theater, for everyone's benefit, there, there's an obligation in the lease document that they share the use of the theater. So it can't just be a PAC rep adjunct theater, right? I mean, the guild needs to have their time in there, the other historic users. So you could build that kind of a requirement in. The, the Scout House doesn't have a working restroom currently. So there's, you know, the plumbing is a total redo. There is not, there's not Americans with Disabilities Act access. So that would be something that would have to be incorporated. We put it, Max put a new roof on it last year. It's got scuppers and downspouts and rain leaders and.
More though, my question, Chip, sorry for cutting you off just in thoughts of time, is how much effort would it take our staff to, to get somebody in there so that they could do all that work? Would it be like a level five is being a lot of effort or a level one? Like we just simply draw up a lease and get somebody in?
I would ask, Ashley, how long did it, the Forest Theater, that, that was about a six month process that we recently concluded?
Yeah, depending on, on how you wanted to, to undertake that project, Councilmember Richards. Yeah, it, it took a good piece of time. And if you'll remember, we started at this point last year with reaching out to community groups and some of that legwork has already been done for the Scout House. But seeing how, what the, what the use of the Forest Theater would look like, what the, the concerns were. And then we had the RFP open for at least two and a half months to allow adequate time for responsive documents. So I would say at least a six monthly time plus negotiations take some time as council knows. So we're looking at probably six months to a year, even with an aggressive timeline. And we started out that way, but it just is, humans are involved, so it takes time.
If you prioritize that one, Mr. Richards, we, I mean, it would be within the sweet spot of the timeframe that we've identified, you know, the next nine, nine to twelve months again.
My suggestion, my suggestion would be that if Bobby has an interest in that, perhaps he could have more extended discussions with staff. Ashley, you could guide Bobby and then we could get more definitive questions asked and answered through this individual solo ad hoc process.
Perfect. Thank you.
Other questions, Karen?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment about that. We have people who are willing to step up and put in the time, the money and the energy. I'd like to see us work as much as possible to make that happen while we have that offer on the table. And try to get out of the way of, you know, making this a bit, a difficult task. And if, if we have to let out an RFP, does that mean that these people can apply for that RFP? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And if you don't get other people, you don't get other people. I mean, I don't know how many people are interested in doing this to the degree that this group has stepped up. So.
So again, you know, that would be something, again, you know, Fred could work with Ashley on. We had Bob working with Ashley in the Forest Theater and me, me getting in the way. But again, putting the RFP together takes some time, putting it on the street. If we had a subcommittee, we could talk about how long, you know, as Ashley said, maybe there were more people interested in the Forest Theater than there would be the Scout House. I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend the truncated duration for Flanders Mansion. That, that really, you're going to prioritize that. That one needs to be on the street for months. But maybe the Scout House is, you know, a less popular use or building in the village, but. Yes, sir.
So I think the, the real issue is for the, the council on the behalf of the, the community, say, what, what's the function? Because the function is going to drive the form. I know it was a little more complex at the theater because you have multiple groups that have an interest there. But I think what I hear the council saying, you know, there, there's going to be a requirement to provide scouting-like opportunities for Carmel youth. So you can have some general requirements. Some of the things that need to be done are, you know, somewhat independent, they need, you need to protect the building, like put a roof on like you did last year. So I think, let's, you, you're heading towards a committee or a subcommittee to do it. Let's, if, if that's a part of the council, we'll figure out how to do it. Because you're right, time is money. And when folks are energized to contribute and step forward, it's kind of hard to maintain that enthusiasm for raising money since that you're about part of the team. So I, if, if that's a council party, that will help move it quickly.
So Karen, if I could just pile on a little bit more on that issue of volunteerism and money's brought to the table. I think Dale Byrne did bring up a point that I brought up at our last retreat. And that was the concern about people who have been vetted through the city that we know are reliable contractors that are, that bring money to the table their own and are going to go ahead and do the project. We've got to be able to find out some way to make that legally possible without having to go after an RFP process. I think if they're employees, I mean, there's got to be some legal vehicle that we could use to get there. Doesn't seem like a difficult road to drive down to me. But when we've had people that a barrier of fence on scenic stands out as a project that they were going to fund, they were going to do it. We know that they have the capabilities of doing these projects. They're insured. I don't know why we'd have to go out to some protracted process. So I don't mean to be critical of government, but it is kind of a unnecessary vehicle that we have to seem to get into. So I'd like to go ahead and see what we can do to facilitate Carmel care's ability to get some projects done around here without going through some more protracted bureaucratic process. So Carrie, Jeff, did you, Carrie, did you want to go first? Joe, Jeff, you have some things.
You wait.
Oh, wait.
So I have a few comments. I'll save the ones that I'm really interested in to the end. The design guidelines and the designer report, obviously I'm very interested in that. I would prefer not to wait. You know, I'm really keen on separating the responsibilities, the design responsibilities from the planning responsibilities. I think the Climate Change Commission is going to have some asks with respect to that. And so I'm a little bit reticent to wait. It sounds like if we wait, we'll be two or three years off from having a designer view board. And I'm just, I would like to see that move forward. Paid parking, I did hear a lot of comments on paid parking. Unfortunately, I, I still think that paid parking is the way to alleviate a lot of the traffic and congestion problems downtown. I think with the modern, with the modern vehicles, with the modern sort of vehicles for payment and stuff like that, I think we could find a way to accommodate expanded free resident parking downtown while sort of forcing the employers, which someone mentioned earlier, the employees of the employers downbound to park sort of on the fringes of downtown. I think that paid parking is a very good way of sort of manipulating traffic control. And I look forward to a repeat of better pedestrian and better bike access and, and safety downtown. So I'm still in favor of that. Street addresses, we, I think above everything else, we've heard a lot of calls for street addresses. And personally, I would join, I would, I myself would join in those calls. So I think it would be great if we could find some staff resources to sort of figure out what we need to do and, and maybe put together a, a plan that was sort of equivalent to the plan that Karen put forward, Karen and staff put forward with respect to the designer view board. You know, maybe a forward thinking plan on what the two-year implementation for just having street addresses or something like that. I think that would be a very good planning exercise. The telecommunications law, I think is something we really need to do. I know that we have, we had our first hearing and I know that we have assigned that to the planning commission. And then eventually it'll come back to the council, but that's, I think that's really near the top of my list. I think we need to protect the city from, from telecommunications companies coming in and doing what they want because we don't have an ordinance that's valid with, that comports with federal law. So that's pretty much at the top. Chip, I'm sorry to say you still don't have a friends of the purchasing ordinance here. So you'll have to keep working.
Sorry, Robin.
Keep working on that. And then since Dave asked, the mayor asked earlier about sort of favorite projects that we might be interested in. There were two that sort of caught my eye. One, as everybody knows, I'm really interested in community and housing. There's the barrier, you know, there are the meetings I've been having, there's the barriers to community, to affordable housing studies that we are doing. I think that that's really, I think it's really important to get that stuff done before we, while, before and while we have the discussion about the Rena numbers. I think that's coming right up and I'm afraid that that's going to be a divisive conversation. And it would be helpful to have, it will be helpful to have some strategies in place, some, some things that we can choose from to sort of make that conversation flow a little better. So I would be very interested in working on that. And then finally, with respect to sort of the fire risk, which has come up a lot in the forest management plan, I think that those things sort of go together. I know that Carrie and I have been talking about that a lot on the, with the climate adaptation stuff. And Chip, I think that the forest management plan is, there's already money budgeted for that in this current fiscal year, right? So there's a little bit of money to hire a consultant or, or do something. And I think that the intersection between, you know, as, as Jill was talking about before, the intersection between houses and trees, I, I think that's just a sort of a divisive topic, especially when it comes to sort of trying to mitigate our fire risk. And I think those things go hand in hand. And so I would really be interested sort of in working on that specific sort of combination of things, the forest management plan and the fire risk.
Excellent. Thank you. Carrie?
Thank you. I appreciate all the, everybody being here. It was really nice to hear the diversity of comments. And that, you know, the common theme is everybody cares about this town as, as we do up here. You know, when I look at this list and I see how many of these projects are currently in progress. So, um, for example, the fire and ambulance service, we're already working on the sign ordinance, the climate action plan, the forest management plan. We're, we've decided to update the zoning codes. We're working on the telecommunications. We're working hard to fill vacant positions. We're almost done with the Forest Theater manager. I think we're nearing the end of pandemic recovery and the stormwater ordinance. So what worries me is we've got those projects we're already doing. So that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. So my question to staff is how many more can we do in a nine-month period? To really be realistic. I mean, I love the beautification. Of course I want Carmel to be beautiful. Um, and the design review is important. We've already started the wheels on that. So my question is, you know, how much can more do we have to squeeze out of here? Um, I like the idea of a liaison to continue working with our volunteer groups. And actually the Scout House kind of fits in with that volunteer group. So, you know, that involves an extra position, of course. So what can we do that, that's not going to take up the bandwidth and be realistic? So that's, that's my concerns and I'm not quite sure how we can just make that decision right here today. You know, I'm really sorry to hear that some of us in the, some people in the audience are not supportive of paid parking. You know, when you talk about some of these things that you want to do. It does involve, and we do have a big budget, but we also have a lot of expenses. And we have public safety takes up forty, thirty or forty percent of our budget and we love our public safety. So trying to figure out another income source with technology. Really coming to the forefront of parking. It's not, it's not parking meters. It's a program that would allow the residents to have free parking. That's what a parking management program does. A parking management program allows us to have a shuttle. Because. Which would help with management of cars in our downtown area. So I would ask those people that are against paid parking to have an open mind about what technology can do. For paid parking. And realize that the residents would benefit from that, from a management of traffic. And from a surplus of the budget. The other thing is, is we're trying to manage more people coming here. And, you know, I have a saying, there's more people in the world and there's more people. Traveling. So paid parking also helps us manage that with a shuttle program. And traffic issues. I am, I would like to actively work on the address issue. I what?
Excellent.
Unfortunately, in our world these days, there's external factors that are putting pressure on Carmel. To make some changes and addresses is one of those. Because of nine eleven and security issues, because of our mortgage bust. Trying to prove where we live right now, when you go do those types of things is very difficult. And I've had that myself. So I'm. I think we can do addresses in a fun way. And once again, if you don't want to put an address up, don't pull it up. It's okay. For those of us who like to be found. And I guess be on Google. I think that's an important issue and it's a public safety issue as well. So that's where I'm headed. I don't really want to add a lot of things. I want to get what we're working on done. And but I think the address issue is, is number one, it's not a big budget issue. I wouldn't take a lot of capital, doesn't take capital, it's more of a staff issue. So I'm, that's where I'm kind of holding back and adding to what we're already trying to get done.
Excellent. Well said. To to Jeff, if I just might, to Jeff's comment about friends of the purchasing order world, I actually think that's more of an administrative thing. I think you guys should be able to do that on your own without our direction. I think it's quite an outdated. I think you got to get out there and fix it, fix it and bring it to us and let us know what it looks like, but don't just wait us for us to sit down and design it with you.
Oh, no, we, no, we, we will need the help with that one. We just need to make sure that we have your. Blessing to to spend staff capacity.
If it's outdated by twenty years, which I think is what you said, then it's outdated. So get it updated. That'd be good. We'll bring it forward and we prove it. Fred Mira's got experience in that, I'm sure.
That's one of the main ingredients to any of the projects. That is the first ingredient.
Well, the, the point is that it takes capacity. And we can, we can only, I appreciate what council member ties what you've said, where we, we can only be spread so thin before. Things start to break. It's just don't get done.
All right, Karen, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off.
I support looking into paid parking. I think that for many of the things that Carrie said, I think it's, it's time for us to look at that. I went down and put little checks by things that I thought were particularly. Interesting to me and I do share the desire to make sure that. Our natural areas are properly maintained. We did a somewhat of a fire fuel abatement project this year in Mission Trail Park. It could have been more successful if there'd been more neighborhood participation in that. But that is the kind of projects we need to start doing and alerting our. Residents that they have to be part and parcel to that cleanup as well. So I'm supportive of number three. Down under prepare the climate action plan and very supportive of that and. Developing the forest management plan, I thought Jeff made a good point of the fact that as we're having to. React to climate change, that will definitely be impacting our forests so that. Update. And since we do, did get a grant for that, we should be going ahead with that. The ADU dwelling unit ordinance, I think is important because if we spend. Put some of the parameters around those ADUs. So that that's not just totally taken out of our hands as far as what someone can put. There that that's important and should go on. The volunteer group oversight, that's interesting to me because we do have many volunteer groups in this town. And many of those groups would do more and would like to do more. They just need someone to help them figure out how to, to. Get things going and get permission to do some of those things. And if it takes. A staff person on a part time basis to work with them, I think Monterey has had a successful program for years. As far as active volunteer organization. So I think that that's.
I wouldn't call, I wouldn't, I wouldn't call it volunteer group oversight. You're really talking about the facilitation. Of the volunteer groups. Oversight sounds like regulation and it's, it's really kind of changing the structure of how we think. To how do we facilitate getting things done in collaboration with neighborhoods and. You know, you have such an incredibly high sense of ownership of the community by your, your population. We kind of in Monterey, we, you know, and Mayor Potter was a customer at the time that was kind of put in place with the neighborhood improvement program. Where you actually put big dollar resource in it because it didn't have the capability of raising the kinds of resources that your. Communities can. So, but if you think of it as facilitation to get the job done on behalf of the community. It might change how it is reacted to rather than oversight.
Well, I like that. And I think that that's a good thing to change oversight to facilitation. That might be a more progressive way to do it. Because I know I've been a volunteer since the minute I moved here and part of the frustration of volunteers sometimes. Is getting the city to let us do these things and do them well and do them. In conjunction with things that the city needs. And if the city has needs. That they can actually share with the volunteer groups and direct the volunteer groups into doing the things that. The city, for whatever reason, can't do on their own. I think that that's.
If, if I, if, if I may, ma'am, I mean, you know, if, 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 if there's no opposition to something like that. I'll add, you know, we're in the budget cycle right now, but I'll add funding, we'll develop a job description and we'll add funding. To the budget, you can, you can create the position. As a part of next fiscal year. So that, 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 so that one's kind of, that would be, wouldn't be done, obviously, but we moving in that direction. It's the same as the purchasing. Policy, for example, we could appropriate funds and get an outside professional to help us. I mean, this, this isn't like writing our design, our, our zoning ordinance. This is, these are pretty. They're not very unique documents. No offense, Robin. I apologize.
Going on, I do think it's very important to increase our beautification efforts and I would hope that coming out of our design. Our commercial design review. That would hold the city's feet to the fire to do our projects as well as the private property owners. And that we would be part and parcel to doing a good job with that. Yes, on street addresses. I have lived in three different places in California. One that had a hybrid system, Lake Arrowhead. Has street addresses and people are required to put their number out because they do want to find people in emergency situations. But they have street addresses, but no mail delivery. There are three post office locations up there and you have to go to the post office. But you can direct your visitors to come to your house and you can get deliveries at your house. And it's still a very nice thing. There's no mailboxes out on the street. It's just, it makes for a safer. Situation. I do think it's very important for people to understand from the get go that assigning addresses has nothing. To do with mail delivery at this point. It would be merely assigning addresses to be used for shipments and it would be used for those financial situations. That Carrie mentioned. But I think it's very, very important. You know, we have a lot of visitors come to this town and if they have a heart attack, they don't know where they are. Run out on the street and count numbers to say I'm the third house down. They just, you know, they, they could deal with an address though. And. On the last page. Underground utilities, I'm concerned that we don't lose this allocation. And that if we, that we should identify a place, something that might be. Worthwhile doing like. The undergrounding of the, the high voltage lines in Mission Trail where we already have. Somewhat of a fire danger that would seem to be. Something that we could do a lot less expensively than streets and get started on it because I really don't want to lose this money. So I think that that. Should be a priority to find a project that we can do with that. But one thing I did see that got left off of here, it didn't get very much love was my idea of a downtown master plan. And you know, so many of the things we're talking about from parking to. Beautification, all of those things, they all have to do with how we want our village to look. And function. And I still think an overarching look at the whole downtown is worthwhile. And I would say hire consultants, hire contractors that can come in and be project managers. Let's get this stuff done. We can't always hire project managers that are going to be on our payroll forever. So let's loot, use contractors if we have to. To move these things along. I think the public's getting very impatient about actually getting things done. So if that would facilitate it, I'm all for it.
We're on it.
Jeff, thank you, Karen.
Well said. Yeah. So to Karen's comment, you know, Chip, at the beginning and Maxine, at the beginning of the presentation, you have this slideshow. And one of the continued challenges that you listed down at the bottom was departments prefer not to use consultants and contractors. And, and what I think is that this document sort of conflates the idea of hiring personnel with the idea of getting projects done. And I think, you know, to Karen's point, I think we can get projects done without hiring personnel if we want to hire contractors. And I agree with her that at some point we should, you know, we should consider doing that. And sort of put a little asterisk by this note in this slide presentation and say, well, we're not going to hire someone in public works. We're going to hire a contractor to do the paving or do the undergrounding or whatever it is. So I'm, I'm sort of on board with Karen with that. I want to make a couple of comments. The climate action plan, you know, I, I'm sorry, I forgot to say this before, you know, Nancy Toomey commented. That she was worried about the city's capacity to sort of implement the projects that we will undoubtedly recommend. And in fact. Carrie and I and the climate committee have been having a conversation about this exact topic. And so I'm pretty sure that when we have our report. Probably after the beginning of the fiscal year, we will ask the city to hire someone to manage. All of the projects that are going to come out of this, whether it's storm drains or fire resistance or whatever it is. So I heard you a few minutes ago, talking about hiring a volunteer, sort of a volunteer person. And I would put in a, put in an ask that when we go through the budget cycle, I think next month or the month after. Carrie and I will know more about where the committee is headed and will have some, some additional information. I would hate to see that fall by the wayside for a year and for us to use a year. Because we, we sort of mistimed the budget cycle, the report came out after the fiscal year started. And then the other thing I would ask of Brandon is, you know, this ADU thing keeps coming up. And you know, we've been without an AD ordinance, you know, I, I asked you to put this map together where we've been without an AD ordinance for a couple of years. And now we have the design, the design guidelines project going on. And I know that there are a lot of sort of interactions, you know, the ADU stuff is sort of guided by state law. We have a lot of sort of. Requirements that are sort of orthogonal to the design guidelines that we have. Would it make sense to roll the ADU stuff into the design guidelines and sort of deal with the sort of regulatory aspects of the ADU at the same time? Or does it make sense to? Keep them separate. Like I don't, like this is really difficult because our design guidelines say, you know, sixteen hundred feet on a lot. And then the ADU says, you know, eight hundred more feet on a lot. And then we start running into trees and. Floor area ratios and how does, you know, how do we get all that stuff to sort of work together and, and. And sort of maintain what we have here.
It's, it's a great question. So when it comes to ADUs and the state law, basically it comes down to, you have to be able, you have to put ministerial type of restrictions on it. So with respect to design, what we can put on an ADU is, does it, does it look like similarly? Does it feel like it blends with the house on the same parcel? That's sort of a yes or no. It's still bordering on discretionary because you know, what's the same, what's, what's in. But you can't put the level of discretionary design guidelines like we see for a regular single family dwelling on ADU. So it makes it problematic. However, I would say there's, there is a possibility to link the updating of the ADU ordinance to. The design guidelines and zoning code update because it will be, the AD ordinance is a zoning code update. It's, you know, it's, it's, it's a hot topic in and of itself, so it may slow down the overall process, but it could be, it could be linked in there.
I guess I'm looking to you for, you know, advice here, you know, is that a, you know, if that makes the design guidelines project a little bit bigger. Is that just, you know, are we, have we already started with the scope creep and doomed the project?
I think it does. I, I, and I think I feel pretty comfortable between, because I, I wrote the ordinance with the team at the county. For ADUs and working with our, our city attorneys. I think we can do that on our own at a staff level, working with the city council, obviously. I mean, we can do the outreach. I, I, I think it would overwhelm the design guidelines and the zoning code update because the zoning code updates are really. The parts of the zoning code that implement the design guidelines. And we keep saying zoning code update. We're not blasting the entire zoning code. It's, it's really the stuff that links to the design guideline. So it's one cohesive project. So I might, if you're asking for my opinion, I'd say let's keep the AD ordinance on its own track. But I do think it's something we can do at a staff level.
It is, it is one of the, so the, the consistency, and I know Mr. Richards hasn't spoken yet, but the consistency I'm hearing. Keeping the nine that we've got going, the, the, the refrains that I've been hearing are the ADU ordinance. Scout house, street addresses and paid parking. So again, those nine that we're already working on plus those four. That with, with the caveat of the volunteer coordinator in the budget and then money for the purchasing. Ordinance, which Sharon was writing before she left us. I'm sorry, ADU scout house, street addresses and paid parking. Street addresses. I'm sorry, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Talk as fast as I do now.
I'm with you, east coasters. I'm sorry, Mr. Richards.
No, I thank you for mentioning that, Chip. That, that's exactly how I feel is, is adding those with the one exception or with one addition and that's the. Fire reduction. I think that whatever we can, to spend whatever we can to make that happen because that, that was a priority of mine. For the past couple of years. And I think that we really need to address it with a hundred percent.
Hundred percent. To answer Councilmember Tice's question, I mean, I think that adding these. Five is manageable with the momentum that we have on those other nine.
And I'm happy to hear about the liaison with the, with the volunteer staff. I think we really need to. Take advantage of that with, for lack of a better word, but I think that the, the offers that we have been given are incredible. And I'd really like to see that, you know, that synergy come to life.
You're right. Sure, sure, sure.
I just, I wanted to add a little bit to what Chip said in answer to Councilmember Tice's question because I kind. I just, I wanted to add a little bit to what Chip said in answer to Councilmember Tice's question, because I kind of scribbled some notes too. And that's, that's kind of how we set this up initially was we wanted to find out what are the, the number one priorities and stuff we should be working on now. And I think we just came to that, which is wonderful. And the way we see this is as, as a number one priority gets done, goes in the bucket, then a number two priority will come in behind it and fill it. So we always have that number of projects going. So at least, at least now I think we have our number one and maybe we, that means we come back in the future as the number one, start getting completed and do this again and say, what do we elevate off the lower, but.
Yes, fourteen, fourteen projects, basically. Two that'll get kicked into the, the new fiscal year.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
And the, so the affordable housing stuff and the fire risk, so it's last forest management plan, that, that's, those things are on the list of things that are already underway.
No, sir. They're, they're, they're appropriated funds, but they're not priorities at this point in time.
So even though, so for example, the fire risk and the forest management plan. So those projects just right now are just.
Oh, they are. I'm sorry. Yeah, the, the housing one, but that was one of the, that was one of the, the nine that I think Councilmember Tice listed. Yeah.
So the housing one is one of the nine.
Yes, sir.
And then the forest management plan, which I spoke to a few minutes ago, that we allocated, you know, you have, it must be in progress because it's number seven on here. It's number seven on the very first page, as you said, receive CAL FIRE grant, begin draft of RFQ, RFQ, RFQ. So that's in progress, right?
That's one of the nine.
Yeah.
That was my question.
Yes, sir. They're not, these are not in priority order at this point in time, but yes, sir, that, I'm sorry, misunderstood the question.
Yeah, I was asking if those two projects were two of the nine that you spoke about.
Yes, sir. I apologize. Yes, I misunderstood and yes, they are.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments by council members? Staff, you clear on your directions?
Nine plus five is fourteen.
All right. Well, let me, let me, once again, thank the public for their participation today. You know, I think there's one person that isn't here that would be extremely proud of the turnout that we've had and that's Barbara Livingston. We all miss her, but I'm telling you, she would have been very, very proud of what we had going on here today. So that is, that is something I'm glad we're able to carry on as a legacy here. Barbara's enthusiasm for public participation. I'd also like to just briefly notice that today, the chief, I, the commander and Karen, for a leader, went over to this memorial for the fallen officer, Salinas. It's an incredible display of emotion. And it was very, very impressive that the city of Carmel went over there. And we were, I hate to say this, but I think we might well have been the only elected representatives from the peninsula that were present. It's so shocking. I mean, it was, but yet there were officers from New York City, there were officers from Montana, there were officers from all over the state of California. Incredible display of emotional love for this fallen officer, a thirty-year-old man who was, whose wife, whose fiance was there. She was supposed to get married on St. Patty's Day. She spoke. It was an incredible event. But I do think it's indicative of the fact that Carmel cares about everybody. We really do. We're an amazing group. We get, we get emotional about it at times. But the fact that we were able to go over there and speak wholeheartedly and show a little hands with people we knew and respected. I was very disappointed that there weren't others there. But I want to thank Carmel for being a community that cares about everybody, not just where they, we're on the west side of the river and the other side. Cause crime does not know city boundaries. It doesn't know jurisdictional boundaries. It doesn't know state lines. And so when we had a chance to go over there today, it was very impressive. Karen, I really appreciate you. Wonderful. Thank you. I know the other council members would have been there if they were there in spirit, but we were very well received. The mayor came over and was just profusely appreciative of our attendance. So thank you all. Really appreciate it. Certainly, Karen.
It was profoundly moving today to see how much respect this young man received from fellow officers, family, friends. There was a sea of black uniforms there. That was really quite something. And I want to thank Chief Hewler and Commander Watkins for taking us there safely in the car. We got to be in the back, not in a paddy wagon, but we needed to be in the back. But I was profoundly moved by the fact that we found out that Commander Watkins stopped the same man who shot Mr. Alvarado in 2019, right here in our community. Our policemen are out on the streets day and night protecting us. And I have a much more profound appreciation for what they do every time they go out there. And I just want you to know that I hope you convey that to all of your wonderful officers that we really do care about them and we are so happy they care about us. So thank you very much for arranging that today for us.
Chief, would you like to say a couple of words?
Well, obviously it was a moving event and we were very proud of the fact that as a police department, that our mayor and our, and our council was represented there. I, I can say that, you know, with, you know, perfect certainty, every time I've been to one of these kind of events, you know, you learn something new. And, but one of the consistent themes is that undoubtedly, you know, you always learn little, little things about the life of the person who, who's gone now. And one of the things that stuck with me was the fact that his fiance every day would give him dog treats and cat treats in his lunchbox because he made a thing out of feeding stray animals while he was out patrolling. And taking videos and showing them to his fiance. So it was just kind of a ancillary story, but it talked about, you know, basically it just reflected what his heart was. It's a really moving aspect of, of the event itself, but we appreciate it. And I, you know, just ask that community members, you know, next time you're sitting on a park bench or out on a walk or whatever it is that, you know, brings joy to you yourself, just reflect a little bit about the, the commitment that your officers are making here in Carmel.
Well said. Thank you all. Thank you all for participation tonight and we stand adjourned. Thank you.